Okay, the time is 6:30 PM. We will call the regular Board of Education meeting to order and have roll call, please.
Deit.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Frisbee absent. May Cumber.
Here.
Wintering.
Here.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Dr. Cox, are there any additions or corrections that you're aware of?
Hi.
There should be an additional resignation that I hope Terry O'Brien has for the agenda.
Yes. Alyssa Iverson as third grade teacher and we-
Resignation or appointment?
That's an appointment.
Appointment, okay.
Now, we have one additional resignation from Jill Jansen for third grade teacher.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with the additional changes to the consent agenda item. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Deit.
Yes, motion carried four to zero. Agenda item three is to welcome the visitors and ask for public comment. As we begin our agenda tonight, I'll explain our process for public comment. The Board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As Board President, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak as well as allowing the Board to complete the full Board agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the Board's authority. Please understand that we, as a Board, cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa's Sunshine Law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's Board meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you, as an individual, may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. We thank you for your support of our school district. Are there any comments from the public this evening? Come on up to the microphone.
Should I turn it here?
Yes.
To face you.
Yep, there you go.
All right, my name is Brian Parrott. I'm the head tennis coach for the Charles City girls team, for which we had 29 girls come out this year, which was an increase of five. And I had asked when I was hired or asked to coach, could we add a boys team at some point? Which the answer is yes, when we can. And I might interject, and I can explain, that adding the boys team will not impact the budget, actually, because I wouldn't get anything more, but I could oversee both. And there is already budgeted an assistant coach, which we didn't have this year, which is fine, but there are two individuals that would- are going to get certified. They played for the team last year. They'd be fantastic. I know that's got to be an open process. Dr. Cox explained, but they would split what is in the budget, and then we'd have those two girls. They could take the girls on the road, and I would take the boys. We've talked to Osage about it. They're interested in supplying some boys. And I talked to Todd about, you know, call Nashville, there might be a boy or two there. But I have no doubt, actually, that there will have a turnout of boys. I already know of several. So the issue is, we right now have four tennis courts, and as a result, with 29 kids, we had to play 10 of our 11 matches on the road. That's- we were the Road Warriors this year, and the girls did great. But if we only had four, we couldn't have the JV team play, you know, so much. So I'm here really to explain and talk about adding two courts to the facilities at Sportsman's Park, which I understand is- it's park and rec, but I've talked to Mr. Lindeman and also Bob Klobodanoff about- about this could be a joint effort with the city and the school, and also that we're applying for grants from the USTA, and that's in process. And I, you know, happen to know the USTA people pretty well. So I think whatever the number comes out to be, and I'm going to give you some numbers here, I think we should ask the USTA to pay for half of it, and the school, and the city would pick up the other half. The mission would be to get these courts in sometime in October or this year, so we'd be able to have the boys team and have six courts for next spring. Now initially, I know I'm going to go a little over the two minutes, but we talked about two more courts directly west of the four courts that are at Sportsman's Park. So we staked them out, and I had Heartland come up and do the stakeout. It's 120 by 120. And I've got prices for the fencing, for the resurfacing, and for the excavation, and then the asphalt. And so the fencing came in at $18,000, which was $9,000 a court. The resurfacing came in at $11,850, so almost $12,000, but that's for the surfacing. So there we're at, we're at $30,000 with those two items. The final item, which just came in tonight at 5:15, so I wasn't able to forward it to Dr. Cox when I was in the process of printing it out, is from Heartland, which is a company that has, you know, a lot of experience, you know, doing things here. And so for that location, the price came in at $76,000 for the excavation and the asphalt. Now, my reaction as a citizen, I mean, actually, we live in Floyd County, is that I think that would total around $106,000 for two courts, a little over $50,000 a court, and I think that's too much, actually. I think we could do it- what I'm going to suggest, and I know this is a park and rec because it's their property, but that we come up with a solution for basketball, but that we would put the two additional courts over the existing concrete, and that would dramatically drop the cost of the two courts. To give an example, the pickleball courts, which are a great addition. I was teaching the YMCA camps for a month, and we had the fourth, the fifth graders and sixth graders on those pickleball courts. A perfect miniature tennis court with Nerf balls, a fantastic addition. But the cost for those two courts was $17,000. So if you can put two pickleball courts in for $17,000, I think it's too much to spend $106,000 for two tennis courts. So if we could put them- if they overlay over the existing concrete, it's going to, you know, I won't- I would estimate it's going to cut the price in half. We know the cost of the fence and of the surfacing, and that's $30,000. So I think from $76,000, it's probably going to cut that in half and maybe more. So, but I know it's a decision of the Park Department, what to do with the basketball, because I know they're down the road with improving that. But there must be a solution. But if we have 29 girls out for tennis, and I believe within a year or two, we'll have that kind of number for boys, that it'll get great usage. I might also just tell you that I'm- on the middle school, I don't know exactly the status, but I've got a meeting being set up with Mr. Thompson, but I've got prices for two indoor courts at the middle school gymnasium, which would not be an expense of the school. I mean, I would raise the investment for putting two courts, two courts in with backdrops and everything, which would be the great addition to the city, Charles City indoor tennis. And I do, I would predict, you know, that within four or five years with indoor tennis and the turnout and six outdoor courts, that we'll be challenging for the state titles within five or six years. With indoor tennis makes a tremendous difference where they can practice. So anyway, that's my report, and if anybody has-
Thank you for the update.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to comments by Board members and superintendent. Dr. Cox, do you have anything to report?
Just two things. I would say congratulations and good luck to our girls softball team in the regional finals tomorrow night. And then secondly, obviously, I'm not with you in Iowa right now. I'm in Washington DC attending a legislative advocacy conference and looking forward to the next couple of days of working on that like we've done as a Board and having a chance to meet with representatives and senators or the representatives out here on Wednesday up at the Capitol.
All right, thank you very much. Any comments by Board members?
I had a chance to do a quick walkthrough of the school today. I shared my pictures. Fantastic. It's just really exciting. The upstairs classroom is 98 percent down downstairs, about 60 percent down. The gym floor is complete. They start putting in the equipment tomorrow, the extra equipment. And lighting is all in. Some of the glazed doors, the glass doors are in. The dry erase board panels between the two classrooms are in. It's all exactly how we had pictured it. It's great.
Thank you for-
Lots to do. Pray for no rain.
Sure. Any other comments by Board members? Hearing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, the State of the District for Board Members. And tonight, we are being led by Terry O'Brien, Jason, and Robin. So I think we'll start with Terry.
Well, I'm going to talk about our standard five, and I guess our goal is to just have a discussion on, you know, how we, as a Board, educate ourselves and understand what we're doing with school finance and how it affects decisions we might make in the future. I- what I did was I kind of just laid out for you, I'm not going to go over numbers, but to just say that during the school year, currently, starting with like the certified budget in like the February to April timeframe, you know, we're talking about property tax, we're talking about cash reserve levies, and all of that obviously is going to affect our finances. Then we move on to our certified annual report during the September timeframe, and we're talking about fund balance analysis and solvency ratios and unspent balance. All of those things that we have to keep, you know, thinking about to make sure that we're at a healthy level. Then we go on to the line item budget in the annual report, which is something that we submit to you in October. That includes like the budget, which is itemized by building and by programs. This budget, the line item budget, we can't, or needs to be less than the certified budget since we can't overspend certified budget. We talk about enrollment discussions in October, which obviously with the funding formula in the state of Iowa, has a huge impact on our finances. And then we talk about audit reports, opinions and findings, and then our facility projects after that, where we talk about, okay, what can we afford to do with the money that we're projecting to receive? So that was all I had.
I had standard four, I guess, to lead the discuss- I guess, was there any comments on that?
No, keep going.
Good. Standard four, policy and legal, you know, is stated that effective school boards lead through sound policy, ensuring transparent, ethical, and legal operations. You know, the questions to discuss with that were simply how can the Board members access the policy manual, which with technology, you know, we can request at any time, have it emailed, or stop at the office and get a hard copy as well, pretty accessible. What practices does the Board use for policy development and review with the policy committee that Scott and I serve on currently, that and other members have served on in the past, that offers an opportunity to review them on a much more regular basis in a environment that's easier to have discussion and refine them and bring them to the Board openly at that point for discussion? What is the impact of the two to three key selected policies? And the one, primary one that I view as being one that's going to come up more and more is the allergy one, you know, we'll be looking at that here at some point. But we just went through the process here in the last several Board meetings to approve the readings and changes of our, all of, you know, the policy changes that we had from previous years. So that was, that was kind of an opportunity to see some of those and talk through them and the changes. How do student handbooks guarantee the rights of students, that the rights of students are protected? I think that clearly lays out roles and responsibilities for all students, all staff, what everyone in the community that's involved in the district can expect, and the response that will be made given an infraction or instance that goes against that policy, so.
And the opportunity for those handbooks and other policies to be available to read online-
Yes, very openly, easily.
-once they're approved, very open, that anybody can look at them anytime they want with access to the Internet.
And finally, how does our Board ensure it complies with Iowa Open Meetings laws? All of our meetings are posted. The local newspaper does a good job of publishing when the meetings are, where they are, what time, and then following up with recaps and articles in the minutes of those meetings. All of our, all the way down to our committee meetings are posted, you know, on the bulletin board at the middle school and open to the public. And, you know, obviously, we've expressed our greatest disappointment probably is that people don't take us up often enough to ensure that we're complying with the Open Meetings laws and attend our meetings, so. But beyond that, I think we do a pretty good job of being open and transparent. Also, obviously, the camera and the addition of being able to publish our meetings online and on the Channel Four, so.
I have, and just to mention to that, it's interesting, I have heard comments from people that watch.
Mm-hmm.
Particularly in comments in reference to your PowerPoint that you did last week. I had several people tell me that they've watched, a few told me, people told me they watched it twice. So I think with that addition and the quality of video that we're now producing, too, that accounts for some of our lack of presence here. But I just want to remind the people that are watching that we're still available to talk to also through contact, through email, or through our private phone calls.
Absolutely.
Don't just look at us as a face on the TV that you can never speak to.
Good.
And one other thing that I thought of as I was reading this is pertaining to Open Meeting laws and that the fact that only two of us can be together, you know, at any given time for, at a meeting or so forth. You know, I recall when we had our last election between Robin, Jason, and myself, we took it seriously right down to those meetings that planned our reelection, and only two of us would attend at a time, and there was a third person out there, Kathy Rodinghouse, who was our kind of communication advocate to keep us all in the loop. And so it's something we take seriously.
I think the one in the biggest struggle that we're all becoming more and more aware of and conscious of is the electronic communication and how simply and easily it could be, you could forward an email too many times in the wrong direction and have no intent other than informing someone, and it could be construed as, you know, okay, well, you're trying to send it to too many Board members to do, get too many, whatever votes, whatever way, which, you know, it's a really tough line to walk when you start to get in those, that realm. But it is something that we're all very conscious of, that we've tried to continue to get better at.
And I think that's something just to speak to in brief, because we do get-
Yeah.
-blanket emails sent to all of us.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I don't, I know for a fact that some of the people don't understand why we don't all answer.
Yes.
And we're not able to because that would be in violation of our Open Meetings law. So either one of us will answer, or Dr. Cox usually will be the one that answers the emails that go to all four of us, or five of us.
And, you know, not, and that as well, but it's the public comment period, too, you know, that-
Yes, we're not allowed.
-great presentation tonight talks about facts and figures, lots of questions and things like that, but it's not a posted agenda item. And we all, you know, understand that as much as we want to follow up with stuff, it's, we can't do it, so.
We don't do it just to be rude.
Exactly.
Where this is exactly what we're-
It feels rude.
It does feel rude. It does feel rude and very uncomfortable, but we do-
Attempting to avoid prosecution.
We are required by law.
Not discussing those types of things.
We're as transparent as we can be within the law.
And I would have to say of everything on the Board, that's probably one of the most difficult things, I think, to follow because it is, goes against the grain of what you normally do on a day-to-day. When somebody asks you a question, you answer it. And there's certain rules that we can't sometimes. We have to wait.
Try not to hit reply all, right?
Right. I have standard number six, advocacy. Effective school boards advocate for public education and the needs of Iowa students. And I sent everybody a Google Doc, and on there, just to go ahead and put away for reference, I went ahead and listed our district legislators, Mary Jo, of course, Todd. I also gave you a link to the Iowa Legislature website if you wanted to look up any other district's web. I played on it a little while. What I thought was interesting, too, is you can see what bills they support, which ones they sit on committees of and things, that's interesting to know. A summary of the effects of prior legislative sessions on our district. I also gave you a link to the ISAB summary of the 2016 legislative, that's a PDF that you could read if you'd like. There were several disappointments this legislative session. Most notable was the failure, failure of the legislator to follow current laws and set the supplemental state aid for 2018 and the unresolved inequity issues. Some of the positives that did come out of the session that directly affected our district were, we avoided the unfunded mandate by delaying administering the new assessment, delayed the implementation of the third grade ready retention, and expanded assurance measures to unused, to used for retention, to use for retention. Funding for the statewide volunteers preschool program. I put this little note down here because this is one thing I took away from that ISFIS Conference that Jason and I went to. They were pouring out some legislative updates, and we were presented with examples of recent tax cuts that were given to commercial businesses and industry in line with their property taxes and their sales tax exemptions. Those totaled $485 million.
Annually?
Annually. The school, we were asking if we would have been given 4% supplemental state aid, that would have been additional $70,000, $70 million. So it is, not only do we need, I think, talk to our legislators about the ones that directly affect the schools, but we need to also be encouraging them to be aware of the ones that are indirectly affecting us. And priorities need to be set. You know, is that tax cut really what needs to be done to take the money away from schools? We're always focusing on those direct, that are directly mentioning the schools. That was interesting. Might be a different spin for us to go down there next January and push for some of those.
Yeah, and yet, and yet I understand the need for the tax credits to inspire and incent business to saddle in Iowa, but I'm hoping that some of those credits are short-term. They're not indefinite, and that we don't really know.
You don't know.
You don't know. And if, and if even, if we can encourage them for one year to let up and just let us get caught back up, it would be some relief. I mean, six out of the last seven years, we've received less than what our operating costs are. So we're running continuously short. We just, we need a break. A list of primary talking points developed by the Board in last year. We increased course offerings and programmings to better meet a wide variety of individual needs. Informed community engagement with knowledge of the school district's strengths and goals, solid fiscal security, quality professional development, infrastructure development, technology, increasing the use of technology to improve higher level of learning.
Good discussion.
Anything else anyone wants to talk about for the State of the District?
The only one to add to that, and you picked up on the quote very quickly, that was, and I can't, who said it, but, you know, the statement was, "Don't tell me what your priorities are. Show me where you spend your money, and I'll tell you where your priorities are." And that was, you know, that very quickly, of course, was spun as to, here's the extreme loss of revenue the last four years because of their priorities of the legislature. You know, and of course, it's the education world, we're seeing spin it as you're taking this as a priority instead of us, which could very easily be justified in the context they gave it, so.
Considering they continually are a year behind their own law in setting our budget, yes, I would tend to agree that they have issues with how they spin things. Very good discussion. In two weeks, we will go through standards one through three. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to Agenda Item Six, the BLDD contract adjustments for the athletic equipment upgrades. Buildings and grounds committee has discussed this.
Yeah, but this simply is, is that there's work that has been completed by them in coordination with some of the upgrades they've done, you know, what fits where and design changes and different things. This is just simply to catch up with their contract to reflect the work that they've completed, so.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the BLDD contract modifications for athletic equipment modifications totaling $1,866 as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the BLDD contract adjustment. Any other discussion? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deit?
Yes, motion carried four to zero. Agenda Item Seven is the Transportation Center. Jerry Mitchell will update us regarding the Transportation Center project.
I guess I don't know where you want me to be in, you want me to sort of begin on what we're looking at doing, I guess, so we'll go, and I think, Terry, do they have the handout that's dated July 7, 2016?
Uh...
We have pictures and we have an aerial.
We do not have that.
This one?
That one, yeah, yeah, they do have.
So I'll basically give a quick overview of that. You have the aerial, you said?
Yes.
All right.
So which is, let me sort of hold that up. This one?
Yep.
Okay. This one, this one, can we put it up there? Do we have it on a, probably not? Okay, all right. Well, let's just do a, I'll do a brief overview, I'll do a brief overview. Here, you may. We're doing it as a base bid package, and then there's two alternate bids on this package. The base bid package is the bus barn itself, which is a, get the exact measurement for it, 54 by 155. It's pre-engineered metal building, metal siding, roof, insulation per code. The building has included two maintenance bays, a car lift in between the two maintenance bays, a wash bay, offices for myself, transportation assistant, IT staff, break room for all of the drivers, and buildings and grounds will break there also. And then IT storage, storage for mechanic, and then bays for all of the vehicles for the, for the district will be in there. So that's the base bid. Cement around it, see if it says exactly on here. Cement is wide out to the two adjacent bus storage buildings, and to the east edge of the building is included with the base bid package. The alternate one is two storage buildings for the buses themselves. The bus buildings are 102.67 feet by 48 foot deep. We're putting them together as an alternate bid package, and those are 14 bays, one overhead door per bus. So each bus is going to have a three-button remote, a remote for their bus storage area, a remote to get into the wash bay, and a remote to get out of the wash bay with timers on the doors. the doors, so when they drive out, the doors close automatically, so they're not left open. Um, and then the last, uh, the last, uh, alternate is on the east side where all three buildings line up, is cementing that out. Um, let's see, I'm not sure if that gives the exact measurement here and I don't think it does. It's approximately like 50 feet behind it. Um, if we don't accept that bid package, then, uh, we can gravel that back, back there because we got everything else cemented. So that's how we're doing it. And if you look at construction cost estimates, and these are estimates, and Gary Anderson and I met again today just to review everything, uh, the num- bid pa- the, the main bid package is estimated at 830,000. Alternate one, which is the two pole barns for the buses is 320. Alternate number two, which is the paving east of the building site is 50, and then we're putting 50,000 contingency. Um, we've been, knock on wood, he's had a lot of phone calls, a lot of interest in this and our numbers are high. We've had, uh, a couple of groups give us some bid estimates and they're quite a bit lower than this, but we want to go with what Gary originally thought, just so we're not shocked. Um, so of course, we want to put it out for bids and we've got the timeline that we want to do it. I'll review that here, just a little bit here. Tonight, um, of course, hopefully the board approves, uh, the tentative plans and specs. Uh, we'll set the date and time for the public hearing on the project, issue bid documents on the 13th, publish online bid notices around the 13th, notice of public hearing on the 21st, pre-bid meeting, we're going to have a pre-bid meeting on the 26th in the afternoon and it's not required that any of the contractors come to it, but we want to give them the options. It's a pretty straightforward project, so we don't know if we'll get many there or not, but we want to with a project this size. Um, receipt of bids by two o'clock on the 3rd of August, uh, then public hearing approval of final specs and award of bid on the 8th of August. Um, have approval and sign a contract on the 22nd of August and begin construction in September of 2016, completed by June 2017, moving in that summer. So, um, I'm very excited. I think it's a.
What? Couldn't tell.
It's a long time. It's been a long process.
Um, it's a beautiful facility. Uh, we'll have it, uh, just like going along with the rest of the district, we'll have it, uh, safety, security, we're going to have cameras, we're going to have proximity readers to in and out the doors. Um, it's on the high school location, so it's going to be easy for staff to get to the vehicles. Um, if anybody wants to walk up and see where it's going, let me know. It's beautiful back in there where it's going. When you're standing there, you can't see any houses or anything around behind you. You can't see the apartments, you can't see metal lane, you can't see Park Avenue. I can sort of make out the high school through some trees, but it's set back in and it's going to be very nice. Uh, they've got, uh, Comet Drive Road going, so that's sort of in conjunction how you can see where it would go. So, um, what do you have, questions for me?
All the trees that are coming down are already down, right?
Are down. There's no more trees coming down for this project.
For this project, yeah.
Correct.
And all of the necessary zoning and planning chain, all that stuff that is all completed, right?
Done.
We're through that process.
Yep, yep. Now it's just getting the bids, accepting a bid. If we, if they fall within our budget and we get approval for this, that's all we have left and then get our building permit and we're ready to go. So there's nothing else we need to do to get approval to do anything for this. So part of Comet Drive, as you already approved, is having the storm sewer, water and all that prepared. That was part of that project. You know, if we don't accept the bids, we, we're ready or we don't approve it, we're ready for the future when we do, so, but at least that's some things out of the way, so.
And are we, we are realizing some savings by doing this all in conjunction, one thing right with another with another.
Yeah, yeah.
I know we talked about that in building grounds, but just to make it clear to the public that.
You mean as a total project?
As a total project.
For the entire transportation center.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Equipment is out and, and with the Comet Drive and where the equipment's out there, people are digging, then, yeah.
Right. So that made that project just, uh, as, as was approved, an extension of the middle school project, which helped save on some financial things there, so.
Which will show up when, when we get there, um, because it will show up on our final cost. It's going to bump us over, um, where we, but that money would have been spent separately before. We're just throwing it in and making it all, because we're able to save those savings. So, so public is where, yes, the final number comes in, we're going to be over, but it's only because.
On the middle school project.
Right. It's on the middle school project, but because we combine those projects together is the only reason that it's over.
And in the end, we spent less on.
We saved money by combining these projects.
We saved money by combining them, yes.
Yeah, it was wise.
We have talked about that before, but.
Correct.
I know you put a lot of hours in this. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, we put a lot of hours in, so I'm glad it's, it's getting closer, so we'll see.
We've, uh, we've talked financing this project at great length and the buildings and grounds and I know that you two, you know, have talked at great length over the last several years and I know boards talked at great length prior to us, great, on this and to realize it is, 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 um, is a very rewarding experience and I know you guys will greatly appreciate it, but through this, as, you know, I, I really like the way that we're structuring it with alternates like we did with the, the big middle school project to have the ability to do the one project if it comes in, um, at, at a good price and get it all done in one shot. It'll minimize the disturbance on the site, um, to the neighbors and everything else too. But, um, I think, you know, this is something that when we can really go back to our pebble vote extension and, and show the community that, hey, that your yes vote is helping us achieve this project that's been very much needed in the district for decades and, uh, you know, we, we obviously thank the community for that support and, and being able to do this, so, um, oh, I, I look forward to the bids coming in and to.
Right.
To really look the, the finances over and, and hopefully approve everything all at one shot.
Uh, you know, alternate one, which is the two storage buildings for the buses, what, what people don't realize is the life expectancy of a bus will go a lot more years now with them being inside if, if we can accept that alternate package because having them sit outside, some of the things that, you know, always get caught on inspections, which is biannual from the state, faded, uh, the reflective stickers and, and things like that that fade and those are not cheap, so having them inside will save on those expenses quite a bit over the years. We'll make our buses last a lot longer, have the vehicles inside, so when you come grab a vehicle, you don't have scraped windows and everything else, they'll be inside and so I, I think it's a good project and hopefully it comes in under budget and we can proceed with it all.
So are you looking then, if by having the, uh, two, two pole barn bus garage buildings, are you looking at not having the buses go home with the drivers at night?
We'll, we'll evaluate that. I think with having them there, we should really have them inside because it's going to protect them all. So that's something we definitely got to look at.
And then Jerry, can you talk about as we would leave the old bus barn, what will you use that facility for?
We've had many discussions on it and we're still in discussion over that. Um, right now, we need someplace for buildings and grounds equipment. Uh, with losing the white pole barn building that we had behind the high school, that's where we stored all the lawnmowers and everything else, uh, with, uh, so now we cram it into the bus barn with, uh, with Kirk trying to work in there and everything else, so we move things out and try to work and all that. So our options are, we turn that into buildings and grounds or we look at putting another pole barn here and it's on, we've got a, another building and grounds meeting that's coming up that we're going to continue to discuss this, or we put another pole building that's on this site and make that buildings and grounds and then have all buildings and grounds up there and then that opens up the college grounds for many other things. We could eliminate everything we have there, use that for middle school football, marching band and all that, or, or whatever we need. Uh, right now, unless we put another building somewhere else, the, the old bus barn's going to have to be probably buildings and ground storage for equipment.
Very good.
And the white, and the white building that's there, we'll probably put that for sale.
Yeah, I think that, well, there's no need for that anymore, so we'll probably put it up for sale and, and sell it, just like what we did, the white, uh, storage building, so.
Did you have anything to add, Dr. Cox?
Uh, no, just, I guess the only thing is that, you know, the, the Comet Drive extension, uh, we have to do in order to put the transportation center up and so that's part of the reason why we had to, um, go a little higher than the original middle, middle school budget plan, but economically it just makes more sense to get this all done at once too. And I did walk back up there, um, probably about a weekend ago and as Jerry mentioned, you know, really couldn't see the high school, could not see a house from back there, it's really tucked in nicely. And I had a, a community member who lives back on Meadow Avenue tell me, uh, that he's been pleased too that he, even with the trees that have been cut, uh, he's noticed that he can't see where the bus barn is going to go and so as a neighbor, that was important to him. So I'm excited to finally, uh, see the end of the tunnel here, uh, when it comes to this project.
Okay. Anything else on, uh, this is just an information item. Anything else for Jerry? Moving on to agenda item eight.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott and Anderson contract addendum. Uh, they're currently, they have a contract that currently covers work on the transportation center, maintenance facility building, but not the bus garage buildings, which would be bid out as an alternate. And, uh, there's an addendum not to exceed 14,000 in our packet. Does Buildings and Grounds have anything to add?
Pretty self-explanatory.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Scott and Anderson contract addendum not to exceed 14,000 as presented.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Scott and Anderson contract addendum not to exceed 14,000. Any further discussion? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Maycumber.
Yes.
Winterink.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item nine is to set the date and time for a public hearing on the tentative plans, specifications and contract form for the transportation center. Uh, public hearing on Monday, August 8th at 6:30 PM here in the Washington Elementary Library is the recommendation.
I'll make a motion to set the date and time of the public hearing on the tentative plans, specification, contract form and cost of the transportation center project for Monday, August 8th, 2016 at 6:30 PM in the Washington Elementary Library.
Second.
Agenda item nine has been moved and seconded to approve as presented. Any other discussion from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Maycumber.
Yes.
Winterink.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item 10 is the one-to-one laptop. This is an information item only. Uh, I'll just go through and read that for the public watching television. Technology Director April Hansen is in the process of recycling some of the one-to-one laptops, approximately 839 devices per credit with Apple. The credit will offset the purchase of iPads for students at Washington Elementary. If the laptops were sold to the public, additional work would be needed on the part of technology staff to erase data from the machines. Apple proposes to wipe the devices and dispose or recycle them in a proper and environmentally friendly manner. The average grade A device will generate a credit between 310, or 330 and $10 depending upon the model, but will be adjusted down if less than in good condition and whether all the accessories are included. The district should be able to purchase the iPads for students at Washington and may even have leftover funds to put towards apps for use in the classroom. Personal note, a little disappointed we didn't get to sell those extra laptops like we had hoped, but, uh, if we can generate some credits and not spend a lot of time and money on, uh, wiping data, we'd have to recoup that in the sale of them anyway, so this is probably the best alternative for the district. And again, that was just an information item. Agenda item 11 is the financial report for June of 2016. Do you have anything to add for that or highlight in the report, Mrs. O'Brien?
Um, yes. There are two things in the miscellaneous section of your report I'll just bring to your attention. There's an ISOP software that we're looking to purchase. It's, it's an automated subcalling software, um, that'll keep track of absences to and integrate with our system. Um, also there's a Piper Jaffray agreement. There was some new legislation that requires now, um, that we need to acknowledge that there could be an agreement between us if we were to do like a phase two. This is not binding or anything like that, but it's one of those legislative things we need to take care of. Um, in, in your financial report, there's depository list that has all of the CUS bank balances, so you can compare them to, um, my bank recs. We're all balanced. Um, we also do not have contractor payments in these bills that we're going to be approving. With the holiday and the early board meeting in July, uh, they weren't ready, so we'll plan on approving those at our second July meeting so that we can still get them paid this month. And then lastly, our general fund revenue, if you're kind of scanning through the report, was higher than what was anticipated, but if you remember, we had the Mid-America rebate, which was a large rebate we received, there was expenses to offset that, but if you're strictly looking at revenue, it's going to increase where we were expecting. And then also our Medicaid claim because of the good work our nurse did, uh, submitting claims is like, um, 300,000 and it was like 100,000 last year. So that will help offset our special ed deficit this year, so it's, is really good.
Very good.
Um, Mid-America rebate, just for clarifications on the LED lights, I assume?
Right.
Okay.
Any questions on the financial report?
No.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the June 2016 financial report as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the June 2016 financial reports. Any other discussion by the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Winterink.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Maycumber.
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item 12 is the consent agenda as amended. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Walker.
Yes.
Maycumber.
Yes.
Winterink.
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item 13 is the correspondence and miscellaneous. Um, Terry's already highlighted the Piper Jaffrey letter and the ASOP agreement. So we all have seen that and we'll move on to agenda item 14, important upcoming dates. Remember, we have three more meetings here at Washington Elementary in the library, Monday, July 25th, Monday, August 8th, and then again on Monday, August 22nd. Monday, August 29th begins classes for the upcoming school year and when we come around to having our first meeting in September, on Monday, September 12th, we will be meeting in the new middle school at a location yet to be determined in that property.
Very exciting. I'm going to send the tree house.
What other upcoming date, present date?
Yeah?
On Monday, July 25th, I believe it's at 7:30 in the morning, there's a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting.
Yep.
And that's probably not on that list that you're reading from.
Buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. And sometime again in the near future, we need to have a policy committee so we can get our, um, committee meeting, we can get the allergy policy ironed out before school starts as well.